The Bridgewater Town Council, the Bridgewater Rainham School Committee, and the Bridgewater Finance Committee. I note the presence of a quorum here with respect to the town council members. I will ask the chair of each of the school committee and finance committee if they have find a quorum present in their respective bodies.
We do not.
You do not. The school committee does not at the moment. All right. Do you anticipate a arrival of a member?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Shall we see? Very well. All right. At this point, I'd like to turn the discussion over to our town manager, Mr. Dutton, if you please.
All right. Thanks, Ms. President. That doesn't work.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President, and I just want to give welcome. Can everybody hear me? Okay.
We're in the same room.
I just wanted to give a welcome. Obviously, this is an annual meeting that we convene before the budget process for us really gets underway. It's gotten underway for the school district, but for us, we run a little later in our schedule. So I wanted to welcome the school committee, our school committee representatives who are here from the Bridgewater Rainham School District, and our finance committee members who are joining us either live or on Zoom. So welcome. Deb, if I could get permission to share the screen, I will. So what I will do is I'll just give you a little bit of the lay of the land and how we approach our budgeting process as we move forward and the work that we do jointly with the school. One moment. There we go. So the work that we do, we try to do jointly with the school, I think, over the last several years, we've developed a very good relationship and a very good working relationship with the school and school committee, and I appreciate that and thank you for that and hope it continues well into the future. So today, I'm going to just give you a little bit of sort of groundwork. The purpose of our joint meeting by it's, there's a provision in the charter that requires that we hold this meeting. I think we would do it, we would choose to do it anyway, regardless of whether or not it was required or not. But essentially, the reasons are to review the financial condition of the town, review the revenue expenditure forecast, and as the charter says, other relevant info to develop a coordinated budget. So on a practical level, because it's still early, especially this year, and I'll explain why it's still early in our revenue projection process, but as a practical exercise, it allows elected and appointed officials to understand the district's budgetary needs and the town's budgetary constraints. So just very early, basic numbers we use to begin to make projections. Over the past three years, we've seen, both on the town side and the district side, we've seen some pretty good state chapter 78 increases. All, pretty much all the towns got a half a percent increase from fiscal 20 to 21. All the towns got about a four and a half percent increase from 21 to 22, and then all the towns saw a 7.6% increase 22 to 23. Roughly one and a third percent for the school district, for Bridgewater Rainham School District and chapter 70 funding, roughly 3.3 in 22, and then in 23, there was a nice increase. And I think partially the state recognized, whoops, partially the state recognized that it needed to implement the educate, some of the educational reform laws that were passed in 22, 21. Just again, just basic numbers, towns' respective assessments in FY23, which is the current year we are in. A total assessment for Bridgewater, 35 million, 35,674,000, which is roughly 11,000, a little over 11,000 per pupil. Rainham was 20,374, which is very roughly 9,543 per pupil. Those numbers include debt assessments, so Bridgewater carries a little bit more debt because of the Mitchell School and some of the other things that are coming off. So don't pay too much attention to the per pupil numbers, but I throw that out there just to, you know, sort of dampen some of the rumor that Bridgewater doesn't pay as much or more than Rainham, and I just thought that needed correcting. Bridgewater's FY total, FY23 total investment in education is shy of 38 million. That's split between Bridgewater Rainham District, the Bristol Plymouth Regional Tech School, which we contribute about a million eight per year, too. That's completely dependent on student population. Bristol Aggie, we contribute 245,000, and Norfolk Aggie is a little more than 84,000. So all those combined total about 37.8 million. This gives you a little bit of an idea of the total district population. Back in the early 2000s, it was very high. That was the highest. That was at its peak. We've stabilized, and over the last year, we've seen an increase from 22, 21, 22 to 22, 23. We've seen an increase district-wide of, I think, about 100, but superintendent can certainly, certainly correct me there. He probably knows far better than I do. Overall, annual budget increased limitations. So I thought I would give folks an idea of some of the constraints that the town lives by and has lived by since 1982. One is prop two and a half, which was passed in 1980, took effect in 1982. You can find that in chapter 59, section 21c. It was passed by statewide ballot back then, and it limits tax increases to two and a half percent annually. So there's a cap on a good portion of our revenue of two and a half percent annually. Can't go over and above that. And just to give you a very quick example, if an average tax bill can only go up by $150 and the town receives an assessment, whether it's a school assessment or any other kind of assessment, and it puts the assessment, puts us at an increase of $400 per tax bill, then somehow we have to cut 250 out of the rest of our equation to fit within that 150 increase that we're allowed. So, so that, I guess, the best way, sort of if you're, you like your desserts, the best way to put it is that we've got a fixed pie in front of you, and the pie gets bigger by just a little bit every year, and we have to cut up that pie and make sure everybody's got the piece that they want or need out of that specific pie. We can't necessarily get another pie and bring it to the table to carve up. So, so we pay out of that general fund budget, which is restricted to the two and a half percent, we pay everything, whether it's education, public safety, capital purchases, our general government expenses, elderly services, library, DPW, what have you. So, so that's, it's a pretty, it's a, it's a challenge. And I know the superintendent and finance committee folks in the council knows the challenge that that is every budget year, and it's why budgeting in Massachusetts is, is a challenge. Not a good thing or a bad thing, but it is a challenge. And so that's, that's one of the things that we certainly look forward to every year. I will say, so some people often ask, well, how do you increase the amount over and above two and a half if you've got expenses that far exceed the 150 per household that would be two and a half percent? And that way is an override. So you hear that term used quite often in many towns. An override is a permanent increase in the tax levy, and that's the only way that you can go above and beyond that two and a half percent increase annually.
Michael, before you move on, can you also explain what a debt exclusion is?
Absolutely. A debt exclusion is essentially a temporary override. Debt exclusion will pay, will go to ballot, and if voters approve a debt debt exclusion, then they are saying that they're willing to pay a little bit extra for a very specific amount of time to pay usually for cap, almost always for capital projects, whether it's the Mitchell School, new fire station, what have you. So, so we've done three debt exclusions in the last 10 years. One is for this building, one is for the Mitchell School, and then the other is for the fire station, which is about to get underway. But we have not passed a general override since 2010. Good question. A lot of people compare us to any number of different towns, and I, including me. I'm often the one that will compare specific expenditures or revenues in Bridgewater with other towns to identify areas where we're in line with, with the norm or not in line with the norm. But I can tell you, especially when it comes to education, that can be a challenge because Bridgewater has some unique components to it that really affect a lot of those comparisons. For instance, Bridgewater hosts two state entities that don't pay property tax, but do arguably burden our infrastructure. I'm not saying that they, at least one of them does, well, both of them actually provide benefits to Bridgewater, but they're harder to quantify those benefits, but they, they don't pay, excuse me. They don't pay property tax, and they, and they do tend to burden our infrastructure. Our population figures are somewhat affected by some of the DOC inmates and some of the BSU students, but not other inmates or students. So that, that's, we don't include in our population figures all of the DOC and all of the students, so that's something that I think we need to be very clear about. It's obviously something much less than that. It's a fraction of that. Bridgewater tax base is largely residential, almost 90%, about 87.9% of our tax base comes from. Hold on just a sec. Tax base comes from residential, about 90%. Rainham's task tax base is less residential. It's about 70%.
So my question on the DOC inmates and the BSU students, why is that? I'm just curious. Why is some included and some not included?
Because. No, it's, it's a, it's a hard calculation. So long-term DOC inmates are included in our population. The only students that are included in our population are students that claim Bridgewater as their residence when doing their tax returns, to the extent they do tax returns. So those, those are the people that would be captured in our population for Department of Revenue purposes.
Thank you.
In any case, so, so we don't have as large a commercial or industrial tax base. I think the counselors know that, FinCom folks know that. And, and we've been working on trying to increase that. And while we've had success increasing our commercial and industrial tax base, we've had equal success, unfortunately, I guess, increasing our residential, so that the proportion, more of both, but the proportion remains about the same as it has been. Bridgewater is, represents roughly 61% of the district students. Rainham's about 39%. We're about 65% of the total district residential population. Rainham is about 35%, so, you know, roughly, roughly comparable to the number of students that are in the school system. Rainham per capita income is about 41,000 annually. We're about 34,000 annually. Again, how that's impacted by the small number of DOC residents and the small number of low-income students living in Bridgewater, I'm not exactly sure. That's a hard, hard thing to really pinpoint without extensive data. Bridgewater's average single-family tax bill is about $6,500. Rainham's is about 6,352. Both of those are pretty, pretty close to the state average. State average is about 6,400, somewhere in that neighborhood. Bridgewater spends roughly 55% of its total general fund budget on education. That's total, total education, including the Bristol Plymouth and Norfolk Aggie and Bristol Aggie. We spend about 51% on Bridgewater Rainham. Rainham spends roughly 50% of its general fund budget on education and about 45% of that budget on VR. So just in terms of our revenue projections for FY24, it's still, we're a little behind schedule relative to other years, and it's a little early to try to predict some of those major revenue sources. State aid, the governor will not file a budget until March, which is about a month and a half later than normal. And our local receipts right now, we're looking to be flat. In some areas, slightly shrinking, and that's due to fewer sizable development projects in the pipeline and motor vehicle excise, which we are anticipating will be flat. And probably not dropping, but will be flat. So just, just to give you an idea, we've, a number of years ago, we implemented with the district sort of a revenue sharing plan, and we felt that it provided both the district, the council, the FinCom, a much better, much better predictability and was far more transparent than, than, than had previously been. So we are very upfront about what our projected revenues are, what the projected increases are, and we want to make sure that we are sharing those revenues with the district proportionally so that we can ensure that we've got a sustainable district and sustainable departments within town. So that's just, gives you a little bit of our, our focus as we go through the budget process. And that, that's all I've got for that, but, but certainly I'll turn it back over to the president. And if anybody residents or anybody has questions, feel free to email or call. Call me, Bridgewater Manager, townmanager@bridgwaterma.org, or give us a call at 508-697-0919. We'll be happy to talk anybody through the budget process and, and how we go from, from nothing to a finished budget in a short order of time. So with that, I'll turn it back over and give it to the president.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dutton. I would ask if there are further questions from the council members for the town manager? I see none at the moment.
Yeah, Mr. President.
Counselor Wood.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for allowing me to be remote today. So my question to Mr. Dutton is one that we started talking about last year or a couple of years ago, but didn't really implement last year. And it'd probably be beneficial, once again, collectively, and maybe not, not with the school community as much, but to run through the budget process by talking to department heads and getting their direct input as we go through the number of meetings that we have to go through on the budget process. So, so, Michael, are we, are we good to do that this year? I know that you and Tony will have a budget before us at some point, but it'd also be good to get some feedback from departments.
Nope. I think, I think that's our intent is to bring department head, certainly the larger departments in, to have a discussion with both budget and finance and finance committee when we get to that point. So, yep, that's on the, on the docket, and we'll certainly invite Ryan in.
Thank you very much, both. Are there further questions from the council? I see none. Questions from the school committee for Mr. Dutton? Seeing none? No? Any comments that you'd like to introduce or any, any material you'd like to present?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ryan Powers, for those of you that don't know me, acting superintendent. I do want to start by echoing what Mr. Dutton said at the beginning of his remarks. I do think the relationship between the town and the district has been very strong over the last few years. And I, you know, look forward to continuing to work with Mr. Dutton, Mr. Salmonte, and obviously the town as a whole. We did have an initial meeting, I believe it was in late November, early December, to start really the budget process, and I think those meetings have started to take place over the last couple of years. And I know for me, and certainly for the district, we find that very, very beneficial. So I know we've continued to correspond through email, and more than likely, we'll be having other face-to-face meetings. But I do want to thank Mr. Dutton and Mrs. Salmonte for those meetings, as well as thank the town of Bridgewater for their continued support. Obviously, you know, you see the numbers, and, you know, the town has supported, both towns have, have supported. We were very fortunate last year, just with the influx of chapter 70 funding and the additional funding from the state. You know, we certainly benefited from that as well as the funding from the town, so I do want to acknowledge that. You know, certainly, as Mr. Dutton said, we're, find ourselves in a unique situation in that we don't know our chapter 70 numbers. Typically, by this point, we already do, and so we have a sense of, you know, where our budget is going to land based on what we know the towns can provide for an assessment. So, you know, it's a little different approach that we have to take this year in terms of building our budget. You know, we really started the budget process back in October internally with our building principals, our district administrators, and we went through, and really what we asked them to do is to kind of create a wish list. You know, what do, what do they need across the district? Because again, you know, we want to be transparent in that what our needs are, whether they're immediate needs or long-term needs. You know, and so getting that out there initially, obviously, we know that, you know, when, when we ask that wish list, coming up with 80-plus positions is not something that's going to happen overnight or, you know, over a year or two. I mean, those are, certainly if they did, that would be phenomenal, but we know those are, those are long-term goals. So, you know, using that to kind of talk about what our short-term, long-term plans are. And, you know, because we've had those initial meetings with the towns, you know, we know in terms of, you know, typically how the budget grows and what percentage. And so we, you know, we realize that we still have some work to do in terms of getting down to what potentially may be a number, but, you know, we don't want to necessarily spend too much time cutting and paring down until we really have a better sense of what our chapter 70 numbers are going to be. But we really feel as though that, you know, positions that we've included in the budget already or that we've talked about at the district level are positions that really are going to benefit our students. If you were, I know Mr. Moore was, was at the presentation, but I talked to the community back in October, just about the current state of the district and where we stand and, you know, our path to excellence and how we're going to get there. Again, you know, there's some things that we can do short-term, and there's some things that we can do long-term to, you know, really meet our end target, and that is excellence in education for all students. We know the current state of the district certainly requires us to take a hard look at where we are at in terms of achievement. And, you know, again, putting plans in place already immediately this year to correct some of those. But I think when, you know, we talk to our principals and department heads about what they need, it is about addressing some of those areas that we need to improve upon. And so again, you know, we're addressing some of that immediately, some of that for next year, and then obviously some of that for the future. And, you know, we're, we're, you know, confident we're going to get there. Again, you know, we always want to be cognizant of the money that we're receiving, not just from the state, but also from the towns. And, you know, we have a great relationship with the other departments, with police and fire. And, you know, because we have that relationship, we're always aware that, you know, they have needs as well. But we feel, you know, it's important for us to advocate, just to come sure Chief Delmonte or Chief McDermott come in and advocate for their departments. You know, we felt that it was important to do that as well, but realizing that, you know, every town has its limitations, and we have to work within those. But we'll continue to advocate, but continue to work proactively with the towns to, to come up with a number that, that works for everybody and that doesn't place a burden on any one town or any one department. But, you know, gives us the opportunity to move forward as a district and make some of those improvements that we need to, we need to make long-term and immediately.
Thank you very much, Acting Superintendent Powers. Are there questions from the council members?
So first off, I wanted to say thank you. I know, jumping into the role and having to tackle a budget, keep the school running and figure out a strategy has, I'm sure, been quite the task. So thank you very much. And I did see the presentation to the school committee on the budget, so I feel like I'm familiar with it. A couple of highlights from what I saw, it seems like a pretty significant ask, and I think you're looking for a lot of investment. And so I actually wanted to, maybe if I could, tie that back to some questions I had about the budget process itself and specifically some, some information from the district review report from the state. So I think a few months ago, or maybe last year, Desi came in and reviewed the school processes, and they issued a findings report. And just so to give some context for my question, some of the, some of the callouts in there were specific to the budget, maybe the strategic planning process. So, under assessment, it said multiple systems such as individual evaluation surveys, screeners, and public forums are in place to review students' learning outcomes. However, the team found limited evidence that district leaders were using the data gathered to inform student supports. This is on page two. The team also found little evidence that district and school leaders facilitated data discussions. Page three, it was educator evaluation documents indicated that some, but not all educators are developing student learning and professional practice SMART goals. So SMART stands for specific, measurable, achievable, timely. So it's basically, you can create goals, but if you don't have things to measure them by, they're less effective. A few other things, and this is kind of important for the question. One of the findings was around budget development, and it had as an area of growth suggested that the district carefully consider how current resource allocation directly supports strategic improvement. The other thing is what allocation, what reallocations may be needed. So a better, in my mind, my interpretation, a better connection between the money ask and the actual strategic goals. And then in those cases where money is being spent, being willing to pause the spend or maybe stop it so that it can go to something higher strategic importance. So that was a, that was a suggestion by the state. It also said, district leader said that students were not involved in the development of the student success plan, and their review team did not find evidence that families were involved. And that's important because it says the student success plan is, in the previous presentation, is the basis for building the budget and kind of taking action. So it also said the student success plan is not based on analysis of historical longitudinal or disaggregated student data. So the creation of it isn't necessarily tied to, tied to past performance. And then within the budget, the specific recommendations, it said the district should base improvement plans on an analysis of historical longitudinal and disaggregated student data or data-driven planning. And then it also said the budget development process should carefully consider whether current resource allocations directly support strategic improvements, including what reallocations could be, could be done. Almost done, just a couple more points, but I'm building up to some. It also said teachers receive data, but each teacher decides how they can interpret the data and use it to adjust. And then lastly, under assessment, kind of some of the big highlights for me, it says, various stakeholders told the review team that the district's assessment systems are inconsistent and decentralized. Multiple systems are in place to review student, student learning outcomes such as individual evaluation screeners. However, the team found limited evidence that district leaders use the data gathered to inform student supports. The assessment highlight was that the district used assessments inconsistently. Data use and data implementation are done inconsistently across the schools and the grade levels. District leaders do not share data in a systematic way. And then specifically quoting from it, district leaders stated that the district did not have in place a system for efficient and purposeful data collection use and sharing to guide decision making. There are other things like that, but I raise that because really as a lead into three question, questions I have around that. And, and I've spoken at the, the school committee meetings as well with similar concern. So I think my first is following up on that first Desi finding, where they said careful consideration how current resource allocation directly supports strategic improvement and what reallocation may be needed. You've seen the finding. I'd be curious, we saw the budget asks, so we saw the incremental asks, but we haven't seen anything in the presentation about existing spend that you've realized maybe didn't hit the mark or has to be reallocated. And I was wondering if you just might be able to give us some examples of, in addition to the ask, where, where are you pausing, rethinking, and reallocating existing funds to achieve goals?
Sure. Great question. So I think first, you know, talk about personnel in terms of reallocating some of those fundings. You know, when we look at positions that we currently have, we don't necessarily have a lot of extra layers. So, you know, we obviously have our teaching staff, we have some. So, you know, we obviously have our teaching staff, we have some support staff in the building, such as special education staff, you know, ESL teachers and so forth. Those are all compliance. So in terms of looking at maybe some of those layers, we wouldn't be able to reallocate them because they have a specific role. When you look across the board in terms of any other potential when we look at any other potential positions that may exist, we have very few at the building level. And so that is a conversation that we do have, like, okay, how could we reallocate? To your point, if we're gonna invest in a position or positions, we want to make sure that we're getting a return on our return on our investment. Unfortunately, when we look at current positions that we have, we don't really have positions that we can reallocate. Hence, you know, you can see quite a number of asks. So I think we definitely have gone through that. I do think that's why, you know, that number jumps out at everybody. When, you know, we're talking about 80-plus positions, but like I said, not overnight positions. I think, you know, so then looking at, okay, if we can't necessarily reallocate positions at the building level. And when I say positions at the building level, that's not to say that we haven't looked at central office as well. I mean, obviously, we're doing top-down. But again, I think if you were to look at our central office staff, it's it's minimal compared to, you know, other districts. So we obviously then embark on, okay, because of our Desi review, because of our achievement data, some other internal data that we are starting to collect and analyze, you know, what could we potentially ask for? And so those positions are reflected there in in the budget presentation that I gave the preliminary budget. I think to your point in terms of looking at data, did I answer the kind of first part? Is okay transition or?
Yeah, and and I think maybe just to give some context, as a town, we're having the same challenge, right? We do not have a budget to tackle all of the to-dos. And so we're, the hardest part of strategy in my mind is figuring out what not to do so that the things that really matter get done. And that's that's sort of the context of my question, but I think you answered it. And maybe if I could, just two other really quick questions along that same intro. So the second one is that finding where it said district leader stated that the district did not have in place a system for efficient and purposeful data collection use to guide decision-making. And I guess my question is if if the district is saying that they're not using data, historic data to 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 influence decision-making, you know, how do you know that the budget items you're asking for are the right things? And on the flip side, in our role, we're accountable for making sure that we spend money on the right things, and it's very hard to do that without any data that says it was a good investment or a bad investment or pivot. So could you just talk a little bit about how do you create a budget ask without data?
Sure. So just to provide some additional context to that report, when they talked to, obviously, part of that was interviewing. So if they interviewed a teacher, it would be a staff member. If they interviewed a principal, it would be an administrator. So when they interview, you know, district level leadership, it could have been one of our coordinators. So it it may not have necessarily been a collective answer, it could have been reflective of one. I do think to that point, you know, that is something that we've already started to do this year in terms of really analyzing our data. You know, we've formed data teams, we have one that meets every other week at the superintendent's level, we call it the superintendent's roundtable. And, you know, that group is kind of tasked with many different things, but one, obviously, looking at data. It could be attendance data, so our coordinator of family and student supports, our attendance officer is part of that. Our two curriculum coordinators are part of that, our assistant superintendent, our director of student services. And so we're really looking at all our DEI coordinator as well are all part of that. And so we're looking at, you know, they bring data to that. We obviously analyze it, you know, we talk about with the building principals. Let's let's look at this district review, because if these are the improvements that they're saying we need to make, let's make sure that we are building a budget reflective of that, reflective of our current achievement, our past achievements. So I think we've tried this year to put those, you know, again, that report came out late in the fall, but we've really tried to act on it as fast as we can. I would anticipate improving the systems that we, you know, we have in place. But I do think we really tried to take a hard look at our current data and look to make sure that it's being, you know, spent wisely in terms of the funding that we're getting. I mean, I can highlight one thing, you know, right now, we're having our winter data meetings at our school level, so our teachers are working with our principals and our curriculum coordinators to look at one assessment we use at the pre K to eight, K to eight level is I-ready. It's a literacy screener as well as a math screener. And, you know, the investment that the district made based on the funding that we've received from the state and obviously from the towns is to increase support at the kindergarten level. So all of our kindergarten classrooms this year have an additional adult in there. We've staffed it with an educational support professional. What you may, we call them ESPs, it may be known as a paraprofessional to to you. And we're already seeing 20, 30% difference in achievement this year at this time compared to last year. And I share that with you because that's, you know, obviously a success for us, but it's a success for you because you're making the commitment to fund those positions. And to your point, what's the return? Well, it's it's achievement. We're seeing it and we're seeing it immediate. So, you know, our hope is that, you know, that's us, you know, we're trying to celebrate small victories every day in the district. For us, that's a that's a small victory. I think long-term, hopefully, it'll be a big victory for us. And again, some of those data systems that we know we need to put in place, we have already started, but I think long-term, we need to, you know, solidify the process that that we have and, you know, expand it. And so that maybe that data team is not just administrators, but it's more inclusive of, you know, faculty and staff and and expanding that. But yes, to your point, we want to make sure that we're building a budget that is based on data that we're allocating the money to the right places. How are we identifying those areas, such things as the Desi report, our achievement data? Obviously, Desi, you know, is working with the district there in a, what they refer to as a focus monitoring cycle. Every district goes through it every three years. They'll be on site in in another month or so, actually, the end of this month and then March for the second part of it. So I'll have that ongoing data as well. So I think we continue to, you know, take this as much as possible and and build a fiscally responsive, you know, responsible budget that also meets the needs of the kids.
Great. I think if, as you pull that information together, if it's possible to share it with us, that would be great. I think, you know, the presentations that are easiest for us to react to and try to get behind and help are the ones that say, you know, here's what I'm planning to do, here's how much it costs, and here are the results that I've got with your last investment, right? You gave me this and I did that. You gave me this and then we achieved that. So that that would be, that would be incredibly helpful. And then my last one is just really quick. So again, building on that that data question, this, I've seen the student success plan, it has a lot of the hows, I'd say, maybe like, you know, purchase Chromebooks and those sorts of things. But I didn't necessarily understand the why, and I'm sure you've had conversations prior to preparing that, that is. But the thing that makes it difficult for me is if you look at any one of those and you say, we did it, I don't understand the so what? So so like, did it work? Like, what outcome were you expecting with Chromebooks? And and did we measure it, right? So and so my question to you is maybe, could you give some examples of the student success plan where where completing it resulted in some strategic goal and how you measure that goal?
Could you talk a little bit? Sure, sure. I mean, I think, you know, the the process that we used to create the past student success plan is a little bit different than the process we're going through now to create our our next version. I think there were some glaring issues that we needed to correct as a as a district the last time, such as technology and, you know, the running joke is five years ago, six years ago at the time when we decided to create that, I mean, you know, internet was spotty. We're lucky if you can connect, you're lucky if you could turn on some of your devices. So some of that was, we need to fix this because we have the everyday data that you can't even get your computer to work. And so, you know, that drove a lot of what you see in that current plan, just in terms of technology. I think you would say the same thing for facilities as well. In terms of, you know, actionable items, obviously, investing in the devices, the technology, the infrastructure behind the scenes that nobody ever gets to see, they're in a closet somewhere, but putting devices in in students' hands. Realizing that the investment to be able to put put a device in a student's hand versus outfitting a computer lab was going to be more cost-effective for us in the long run. You know, you're talking of $1,500 to $2,000 replacement of a desktop versus a $300 Chromebook. It made it more accessible for all of our students to have access to that. And so when we look at, you know, again, the accessibility piece, right now, five to 12, every student has a device. K2 for, basically, we have one Chromebook cart for every two classrooms and even additional, but that's kind of how we roll that out. So everybody has access to technology. We're even able to use some of our grant funding to make sure that students had access at home in terms of technology. So that was all part of that initial. Obviously, a lot of the facility upgrades were on safety and security. So you know when you walk into one of our buildings, so just, again, maybe not have a data point in terms of, you know, a chart or graph, but you know when you walk into a building, you have to buzz in, you see that immediate result that our, you know, our schools are secure.
Yeah, and I think to that earlier, I think recommendation on re-channeling funds that maybe didn't work to other places, I think just for visibility, understanding where in that student success plan, things maybe didn't work and how you how you can tell. You know, we bought these things and it didn't get what we want, so we're not going to invest in the next round of things. And we're going to move that money. I think, you know, for an outsider looking in, it would be great to to understand what those decision criteria are. You know, if it works, how do you know? If it didn't, how do you know? How do you know that this year was better than last year? What are you, what are you looking at to make that call? That'd be really helpful. And then when we see the things that are working, saying yes to a budget is easy. Okay, works. So great. All right, thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you both. Yes, Councilor Robinson, do you have a question?
I do. I have a few questions. Hi, everybody.
Mr. President, with all due respect, it's 7/11, so we just have to be cognizant of the time as well for our regular town.
Thank you, Councilor. No doubt.
Thank you.
I have three questions for you. What are specific achievements and outcomes, probably similar to what Eric is alluding to here? But I would love to hear a couple of specific outcomes and achievements that you. So if you say, here is the ask of what we are requesting in terms of where our achievements have been for the past few years, here's what we're expecting to get next year based on if this, you know, funding was granted. The second question is, actually, you had talked about a lot of the focus being on new hires. What else, and I apologize if I've missed some of that overview in terms of what should improve or affect outcomes and achievements? And then the third question is, when is the next check-in in terms of when we hear about, you know, whatever ends up being approved, what you actually spend it on?
Sure. And if I missed any of your questions, please, you know, just remind me. You know, the the first question in terms of, you know, what are we are using for measurable data and outcomes? I mean, I think the very things that we've already identified that have identified us as as lacking in terms of, you know, our achievement data, MCAS. We have internal data that I've mentioned already, I-ready. Obviously, the, you know, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, their feedback that they're giving, not just on the district view, but on their continued monitoring. I think those are all things that we're using as our baseline. Okay, this is where we're at. And so we're still going to use those as measurable data going forward. So if we're asking.
Is there a specific, like, so what's the goal to, you know, if you're at a particular level? Is there a specific percentage increase or certain points level in?
Well, I mean, I don't want to necessarily aim low. You know, we've talked to our our district, you know, we, I mean, our ultimate goal is to be a high-achieving district, the highest achieving district in the Commonwealth. You know, so what does that mean? We're talking about 90, 95% of our students on these measures are proficient or you know, meeting or exceeding expectations. Is that going to happen in a year when in some cases we're at 40% meeting or exceeding? That's a big jump, so we're trying to be realistic. But I also don't want to lower expectations, so I wouldn't want to say we'd love to see a 5% increase. If a 5% increase happens, I mean, again, that's a small victory for us because it's an increase. But, you know, I think we need to continue to show progress. And so in terms of, you know, yes, we'd love to be at 95% or higher. Is that reasonable to happen?
With you on realistic goals. So I guess it's a question of like, are there, you know, have you actually sort of set yourselves a realistic goal?
Well, in terms of achievement, I mean, our expectations that we, you know, we are making progress in terms of saying we expect everyone to be 5% better. That's, you know, kind of difficult to to put it, because what's happening is you now have a new group of students. If we're using, say, just MCAS, you know, if we were talking fourth grade MCAS, we have a new group of students now that are fourth graders. So yes, we believe we're going to have achievement, but it's hard to put a number on a different group of students, if that makes sense. I think the other thing we always look at is the individual student in their growth. That's the other measure that we we want to see. So anywhere, you know, growth is significant growth or average growth is anywhere around 40 to 60%. So when we look at, you know, we do get a overall growth score for the district, so we want to make sure we're falling in that, you know, that range. And so that's something that we want to make sure we continue to do so. Again, you know, in some cases, we're less than 30% growth, so we're not making growth in some areas, or our students are not making growth in some areas. So I think when we look at, you know, what achievement data, we're going to look at that same achievement data that's identifying those weaknesses as as our areas for success.
Yeah, I mean, I think it'd just be great to understand what specific achievement outcomes you're really looking for, kind of like the deltas are right. And just it'd be great to check in at some point, you know, against those simple. Yeah, I'll pass it back to you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilor. Yes, by all means.
To clarify also, Mr. Moore's earlier point. The budget that Mr. Powers presented to the school committee with the 29 positions, that was accepted by the school committee. So as a budget subcommittee, we're kind of working on that. We know that number was high, but him going from his admin team and his principals, that's what he presented to us. So that will be looked at, debated. We've had already some meetings to kind of talk about that, like, where do we prioritize? You know, speaking with him and as a budget commit subcommittee. So perhaps 29 is not what we're going to put to you, but we're trying to prioritize and be realistic and fiscally responsible. But a lot of those positions, if you were at that meeting, and I know some counselors were or saw that presentation, we're focusing on our high-needs students, our special education positions, our speech and language, the first grade level, some ESPs, those were where he was looking at that we needed to focus on. Those foundation-level students, those students that are high-needs. So that's kind of where our head is right now of how, like, what you're asking, how are we prioritizing? How are we going to get better with this new budget?
Thank you very much. Just in light of the time, I know that we have exceeded our proposed time allotment, and I don't want to miss any opportunity. In case any member of the Finance Committee may have comments or questions, I know that we haven't heard from any, and I do want to extend an opportunity to them to express any questions or comments they may have, if any. Some of you are online, so I don't know if any of you do, but please make yourself known in that case. Not seeing any at the moment. The offer is open. I would like to entertain maybe one more question from the council.
I just have a simple.
Yes, Councilor Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of simple questions. I know you had your first pass of presentation to the school committee on the budget. What percentage of an increase were you asking for?
I believe it landed around 10%, Mr. Gallagher, but I can give you, if you give me one second, I believe I have that. It was a little over 10%.
And I know you're going back and refining some of the things at the moment. What's the timeframe and when the second, like, when your next presentation might be? Are you going to, are you anticipating on waiting for the governor's budget to come out first in March before you make a revision or anything like that?
And that's something I think is a is a school committee will will have to address only because of the timing of it. I know we had planned the public hearing for the, I believe, the first week in March. So we're hoping these numbers are here before that. If not, then I think we probably need to, you know, internally take a look at that and see. But yes, our hope is and our intent is that we'll have that information sooner rather than later, although, you know, we're cautiously optimistic. And that way, we can present a budget in the beginning of March that is reflective of those chapters.
Thank you.
I just have one question as a follow-up to Mr. Gallagher. Do you know what last year's initial ask was and then what the final percentage was?
I don't have that tonight.
And then it was like 3% type.
I don't have that tonight, but I can get that. I can get that.
It's not like to your point. I don't, I've never seen double digits, but I'm seeing them all. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Acting Superintendent Powers, I thank you very much for your comments and responses. Mrs. Holbrook, so good to see you again. Mr. Dolan, thank you for being here tonight. And to all of the members of the Finance Committee who have attended this evening, I thank you all. Obviously, this is a very preliminary point in budget discussions, and I think that we'll have further opportunities to speak with the school committee members at another point. But I thank you all. I would entertain from the councilors a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? There were none. Thank you very much.